I guess we're on the air. Welcome to the Fiscal Year 2020 Budget Workshop Meeting of August 14, 2019 at 5:00 PM. We have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order. First thing we'll do is to pledge to the flag. Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. With that, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, sir. The format for today's meeting is I'll present a staff presentation of approximately 109 slides.
Is that all this time? You're cutting us short this year?
And then, well, yeah, we shortened it quite a bit this year. And then that'll be followed by petitions from the public present and then your discussion on setting priorities. So with that, welcome. And we have staff here to answer any questions that you may have. And we'll also have a couple other presentations during this meeting. This is the agenda that we'll be following. This is the format. This is our budget, our proposed budget to council. Once we go through this workshop and two public hearings, it becomes the adopted budget for 2020. And again, senior staff is available to answer questions as we go through this presentation. As required by code, I am required to annually prepare and submit a balanced budget to council, and that's what we've done here. The vision of Titusville. I'd like to emphasize Titusville is growing. And we haven't seen that growth in quite some time, so we're very pleased. And the revenues are starting to show growth as well. Back in January, we had a public workshop to which council determined their strategic goals and objectives in two subsequent meetings. So this is a review of that. It's very hard to see, but I'll just read the four main categories, which is quality of life, efficient and effective services, financial stability, economic development, and efficient government. The current budget environment that we're in, property values are continuing to increase at a moderate rate. We're still lagging behind the rest of the county, but we are starting to see some good growth up here. Development revenues are actually up a little bit. They were steady when we prepared this presentation, but they are up just a little bit. Operating costs for health care remain on track. We do still have the significant OPEB liability. And as you recall, last year, we had approximately $14 million in unfunded operating capital needs. This year, it's down to $12 million, and we did have about a $1 million pickup at midyear. So that helped us quite a bit. The executive leadership team back in January, this is the guidance that I gave the team to build this particular budget. We're continuing with our lean Six Sigma initiatives. We're committed to our employees through professional development, best practices and training opportunities. We continue to evaluate and adjust cost of living, compensation, and benefits to attract and retain our quality workforce. Health care costs and liabilities, we have done bottoms-up review. As a result, we are able to offer our family care to different tiered plans this year, and we're in the open enrollment period for that right now. One of the things that we implemented this year is a five-year budget plan that staff worked very hard on. It will assist us in the future budget years, and it also helps us to see where and when we need to make major capital investments, such as a fire truck. It's a half a million dollars. So rather than just be surprised when we go into the budget year, we now have forecasting when those particular items are going to be needed. So I think it's a very good tool. We are going to have to adjust and continue to adjust staffing levels as appropriate with our growth. We are maintaining our general fund emergency stabilization reserves at current, and we funded our OPEB trust fund very similar to what we did last year, about half of what we're required to do. Here's your budget. All funds is $122 million. That's a 2% increase over last year. Your general fund is $48 million, and that's a 7.10 increase over last year. So the revenues are up a little bit. The highlights of this budget, we are proposing a 2% cost of living pay adjustment across the board to all employees. To put that in perspective, the county's proposed budget is 2.4%. The CPI is running right at 2.4%. So we're a little bit on the initial budget builder, a little bit low. So you'll see later on in the presentation where we plan to make that short coming up. The capital items that you see there are all what I consider blocking and tackling. There's nothing fancy about any of those items. We're continuing to work hard on the Indian River Lagoon restoration projects. We're way ahead of most in the county, and I'm very proud of our Stormwater for staying ahead of it. We are replacing essential vehicles as they become obsolete or worn out. Computer software upgrades continue, and our continuing effort to make sure our water and sewer systems are to standard. We did budget 6.6 miles of roads this year and anticipating a 5% increase to city-paid employee health care premiums. And there you see we're able to fund 1.8 million of the required $3 million contribution to the OPEB trust fund. This is all revenues. It shows you where your general fund is in blue, dark blue, and then light blue is all the other funds to arrive at your $122 million budget. This is where the expenditures occur. This is all funds. Public safety is running about 29%. You'll see in the general fund, it runs about 50% of our revenues. Staffing organization this year, we are proposing an increase of 11 FTEs, which takes us up to 519.5 employees. And this is our organizational structure, and there is no change from last year. This is our staffing levels. You see, we were flat coming down out of the recession in 11. We bottomed out at 12, stayed steady through 15, 16, started to see growth, and we leveled off at 17 because of the uncertainty of some of the health care issues that we were facing. So we leveled off, and then we're able to start bringing some employees back on in These are where the employees will be added. Of note, we are hiring a digital communications ADA specialist in support services. This will be your media person, council member Stokel, that we've been working for for many, many years. Three police officers added. We've eliminated one administrative assistant from fire and some site inspectors. Okay, buy fund. This is the general fund. This is where your revenue comes from. You see property taxes make up about 37%, and that's where the other rest of the general fund is made up out of. Property taxes, again, from the recession. You can see the continual drop from, actually began in '08, down through '15. We stabilized in '16 and started steady growth back up. And you can see it's a moderate growth, but it is a growth. And we're so much better than those wild swings of the past. I'd rather have a moderate growth at steady pace than big swings. Here's your millage rate. We actually are bringing the millage rate down this year. It's halfway between rollback and current. Your tax revenue, steady growth. Now, you remember, 2016, 2017, we had a couple hurricanes in there too, so it did have an effect on some of our revenue. The proposed budget was built at 7.7210 mills, which is 3.01 above the rollback rate of 5.4951. It's 2.0 below current rate of 7.9517. This yields an additional $462,000 when compared to the rollback rate. The approved tentative millage rate, which is 10% above rollback, is 8.2443, and that adds an additional $1.7 million should council choose to go to that millage rate. These are your general fund revenues, and I'll kind of talk about some of the ones that are, you see some big swings. The franchise fees actually show zero. It's actually 2% in water tax this year. Permitting fees are up 1%. Intergovernmental government is up 4%, and that's due to local option gas tax revenues. Prior year appropriation, increase in projected carryforward amounts. We had a decrease in code enforcement and court fines. We also had a decrease in the projected investment return in donations. Transfers in were increased due to lease proceeds for the financing of capital vehicles and equipment. And I just talked about all that. So here's your expenditures. As you can see, public safety is 49% of your general fund. Ms. Bousakka says that she needs a lot more than 7% there. General fund expenses, personnel costs are up, again, with the pay raise, an additional 2%. 5% increase to the group health care cost and a pro-rata proportion of the OPEB trust fund of $397,000. Operations is up 12% overall increase. That's due to operating costs, supplies, utilities, professional services, fleet maintenance, and IT charges. Capital is 31% over increase due to increase in vehicle purchases, including 18 police vehicles this year. Debt service includes an estimated new debt payment of $250,000 for the fire department's SCADA packs and essential vehicles for public safety and public works. Transfers out increased $352,000 to fund six miles of roads through general fund tax revenues in 2019. And fund balance was used on assigned restricted, unassigned carryforward balances to the fund From the time we prepared the budget, we actually, good news is the state revenues came in $118,000 more than anticipated. So we'll show you at the end of the presentation where we can utilize that money without raising taxes. So this is good news. Other funds, this is any fund other than general fund, starting with your special revenue fund. One thing I would like to note is during this past year, TPD increased their building fees.
Impact fees.
We were bringing in about $69 per permit, and it's now over $400. So that was a great adjustment, which will help with revenues. Your CRA, $1.12 million. And there's the funding sources. You can see the county as well as the city. The proposed CRA expenses. Debt service, pretty simple. The bottom one is the Titus Landing, which we have revenue to cover that, and the two bonds that we have that, one expires in, what, three years, Tom? Yep. Yep. So you're in good shape with your debt. Capital projects list, none. This is what we did last year, and we were able to put, at midyear pickup, we were able to accomplish some things, and I'll re-describe what we picked up in midyear '19. So we're anticipating a midyear pickup to try to get some capital projects. Road and streets, again, 6.6 miles, and sidewalks for about a million dollars. A comparison of the roads, you'll see a big spike in '19. We were able to add three miles of roadway with other people's money to complete Hopkins Street. So we actually accomplished a little less than 12 miles of roads this year, which is In 2020, we're proposing 6.6. Water resources, capital fund totals right at $5 million, and you can take a look at what is being proposed this year in their capital project list. And the total is $4.99 million. Stormwater capital fund, half a million dollars, and those are the three projects that are proposed this year for Stormwater. Onto your enterprise funds, starting with solid waste. A comparison of '19 and '20 and the variance, it is up this year. And the expenses, let me kind of go through those. Again, personnel expenses, the 2% pay adjustment, 5% increase of health care, and the pro-rata portion of the OPEB trust fund. Operating is increased due to rising costs for fuel and vehicle repairs. Capital changes due to the purchase of pickup trucks, garbage trucks, side loader, and grapple truck. Debt service has changed to the financing of capital items proposed in this budget, and the change in fund balance is due to revenues exceeding expenses. Stormwater, down a little bit. Personnel, again, 2% pay increase, 5% for group health care, and the pro-rata share of the 397 OPEB trust fund contribution. Operating increases due to rising costs of fuel, vehicle repairs, liability insurance, and general fund information technology support. Capital is down due to fewer vehicles being purchased. Transfers out changes due to more funding required for CIP projects, and the fund balance, the change is due to less fund balance required to fund FY 2020 expenses. Rates comparison, a proposed 2% increase will impact a family household of $1.80, and then collections, waste collections, residential as well as commercial. Here's where we lie on solid waste, right in the middle. You can see the city in red is current and the city in green is proposed. Solid waste, again, red and green. And finally, commercial, red and green. Marina, a true success story. When we outsourced the marina three years ago, we had a 42% occupancy rate. Today, we have a waiting list. It's actually two pages long, and services have been dramatically improved as well as the facility. So we're really proud about this operation. Adopted from '19 to propose this year, it's up just a little bit. And the expenses, operating, overall expenses were flat. Capital increased, capital purchases to include surveillance cameras, new fuel dispensers, and a shop building. Fund balance has changed due to revenues exceeding expenses. And this is what Bridget would say, truing it up. Water resources, up just a little bit from '19. Water resources variances, again, personnel costs, 2% pay adjustment, 5% increase to group health care, and their pro-rata portion of $397,000 to the OPEB trust fund. Operating is increased due to rising costs of fuel, vehicle repairs, liability insurance, field ops vehicles, and general fund information technology support. Capital changes due to proposed vehicle and equipment purchases. Debt service consists of a principal payment of the 2010 bonds for the Area 4 Wellfield and the Morning Dove SRF loans. Transfers out is changed due to increase in transfers from operating fund to CIP, and the fund balance is a result of total revenues less expenses. And from here, I'm going to turn it over to what we formerly called PRFM, which, Henry, I think it's called, what is it called now?
Good evening. Henry Thomas with the firm of Reftalis.
Reftalis.
Reftalis. They're headquartered out of Charlotte, North Carolina, and as of July 1, they acquired our firm. So I'm not going anywhere for a while, but hopefully this gives me a place to go in the future sometime. So we have only 17 slides, but I'll try, and I'll try to get through them quickly, taking the lead from Mr. Larisse. We've updated the financial forecast for the coming five-year period, beginning with the budget year 2020 through 2024. We looked at the requirements to be funded from both water and wastewater rates, looked at your capital expenditure needs and a strategy to help pay for those. Obviously, we have some compliance tests we do with respect to debt service coverage based upon your outstanding debt and those requirements, as well as internal metrics that we look at with respect to cash and available cash balances going forward, primarily to maintain a minimum operating reserve of 90 days of our operating and maintenance expenditures. And finally, based upon those criteria and the budget and projections, we estimate your future rate increases. So the revenue requirements, obviously, we talked about operations and maintenance expenses, the primary one there being labor, renewals and replacement. Those are capital expenditures that are reinvestment in existing assets to extend their useful life. And then capital improvements are our new needs of the system, either expansion of parts of the system or improvements that are beyond just a mere replacement of an asset. And typically, we fund our renewal and replacement projects, pay-as-you-go. With some of the larger capital improvement projects, we do use debt funding as the assets have long lives. It helps keep rates down to be able to finance at least part of your capital program. We also looked at your debt service requirements, and part of what we did in this plan was to recognize that in the last year of the plan is the final year of your 2010 bond payments. And that led us to our rate change strategy, recognizing that there was a significant amount of debt that would be going away in 2024. Obviously, we try to, as we've been doing in recent years, maintain a balanced and sustainable approach, not get too carried away with debt financing to maintain a good debt-to-equity ratio, and closely monitor those operating reserves or cash balances. So just from the last time, one of the things that we're seeing is we continue to experience new growth in customer connections. We're now projecting 140 units a year for all classes of customers. There's at least information out there that tells us we're still being conservative. We're wanting to see this growth occur a little more before we make the five-year adjustment. But any increase at this point, given your capacity utilization, any increase in customers above the forecast would strengthen the overall operating results of this plan. So the operating costs are, in the aggregate, are projected to be about 2.4% annually over the five-year period for general inflation. The demand for goods and services, higher construction costs, maintenance costs, we've escalated over five years at 4% a year. In 2020, there is a $260,000 increase in the general fund admin charge. And in the plan, as Mr. Larisse pointed out, there are three additional FTEs beginning in FY 2020, and that costs, including salaries and benefits. And that cost, including salaries and benefits, is about approximately $152,000 a year. At this point, Sean's going to share with you some of his strategies and plans regarding the capital improvement program.
As we usually do, I take a little bit of time to talk about some of the specific projects that are part of our capital plan as that drives the rate and our considerations for rate increases in the future. So one of the first things we'll talk about is we're making some major improvements to our telemetry and SCADA systems. And basically, these are the computers that operate and run many of the machines at the water and wastewater plants. And the telemetry system is the communication system that carries those signals back and forth. And so we're doing some panel upgrades. We're upgrading our distribution pressure system, monitoring throughout the system. And we're spending about $300,000 a year on that. Part of these upgrades are required because these type of electronics have a short lifespan before they are obsoleted, before they become obsolete. Next up is cybersecurity. This is a very hot topic right now. And of course, with communications and an electronic system like this, there is a risk for cybersecurity. And of course, we don't want anybody taking control of our water plant. So it's very important to us to make sure that we are as secure as we can possibly be. So we spend a lot of time working with IT department moving forward, particularly with separations between the IT network and our operating network. And things are moving along very well on that. Next, coming up next year, we're going to be looking at doing a PDR for enhanced drinking water treatment from the Morning Dove plant. We've got some plans, and this will help our disinfection and will help stabilize the quality of the water coming out of the Morning Dove plant. It's an improvement above what we have today. I will also be looking at making some improvements and updates to our drinking water storage. BioSolids has been in the news lately. If, I think it was over the last week or two, they talked about land application of BioSolids. In fact, there was a photograph of an operator from Titusville that was on the front page of the paper. Although it wasn't Titusville, it was one of their file photos from '06. So what we're looking at is we do land application from both Blue Heron and Osprey. Currently, we are purchasing a mobile unit for de-watering at Blue Heron where we'll be able to de-water. And then that, those BioSolids will be taken to the landfill and will no longer be land-applied. We do expect that there will be a lot of talk about BioSolids application, land application, and there may be a moratorium coming up in the near future in Brevard County. Another major initiative of the department is the lagoon. And so we're, we've got significant spending in infrastructure along the lagoon. This is looking at a five-year planning horizon that you see there. Marina Lift Station and Causeway Lift Station are located very close to the lagoon. Those are under design right now. We're also looking at replacing a number of the force mains that run along the lagoon as it's time to update them and hopefully, and also work to try to move them away from the lagoon as far as we can to prevent any spills. Water meter replacement, still on track. We are on track to be finished to a complete AMR conversion by 2021. And we're spending about $400,000 a year on that project. Some major water main projects, we're looking, we're still working in design for the Carpenter Road Loop. Then we're also looking at doing some upgrades in pipelines in the Shady Oaks area, which is just north of Dunn Air Park. And then we're also, in the long term, we're looking at doing, finishing the 2-inch conversion project. We still have about 12 miles of 2-inch within the city that needs to be replaced. We know that pipe is aging. And so we're going to be looking to go to SRF to speed up that process and hopefully, over the next few years, get an SRF loan and finish that, hopefully, within the next four or five years. And then another group of lagoon funding, these are all projects for the Save Our Lagoon initiatives. The Osprey nutrient, Osprey Plant Nutrient Upgrade is moving along. We're currently at 30% designs. And as a reminder, this was an $8 million grant that the city was awarded by Brevard County. We're still moving forward with the planning phases of the septic to sewer conversions. We have identified 18 systems that are located along the lagoon, 18 septic systems along the lagoon that will be converted over to sewer. And we're in the planning phases of that. As well as, we've been awarded an additional $200,000 from Brevard County to do smoke testing of gravity sewer lines, as well as the repair of the private portions of those lines. Excellent? Okay. Be happy to answer any questions on the projects, or we can hold those till the end, whatever council would like. Okay? Henry?
So just some observations since the update we did last year is we do have significant capital projects, most of which are the more significant ones towards the end of the forecast period and assume to be funded with the SRF loan. The, the projects are listed here that are included in that. And those are projects that Mr. Toffler just went over with you. With respect to the cocoa bulk water purchase, we, the take-or-pay purchase amount was reduced down to 100,000 gallons a year in FY 19 and going into the future. And this was able, this enabled us to reduce our bulk purchase cost by $450,000 a year compared to FY 17. The bonds, the 2010 bonds will be, anticipated to be refinanced in 2020 with a bank note, approximately $200,000 in annual savings. The last year, the debt service payments associated with the utility series 2010 bonds will be fiscal 2024. That's an approximate $3.6 million reduction in debt service. So again, when we looked at the rate path, we recognized that we, in the near term, we're going to use a little bit of fund balance to make this all work. The goal here is to keep up with your operating costs so that we don't have a deterioration in monies available for your reinvestment in capital needs. But recognizing that reduction in those bond payments out in 2024, we didn't want to, we wanted to go ahead and recognize that in the rate path so that when we get to that point, the rates will be in the correct proportion to your expenditures over the five-year period. So the last update that we did for this year called for 2% increases in water and wastewater, followed by 1% increases. And then beyond that, we had, the rates would be flat. What we've done with this plan is we've reduced the 2020 rate increases to 1% and then are proposing to maintain that 1% a year over the next several years. Now, the one thing that, again, could possibly impact this positively is if we see the kind of growth that is potentially out there, if it occurs, we should probably be able to, to look at those increases over time. So the reasons for the rate adjustment is we want to keep up with our operating expenses. We want to maintain the proper level of pay-as-you-go funding for your renewal and replacement program. We want to maintain a minimum cash balance of 90 days. All these things have been accomplished with this. We want to keep 90 days of O&amp;M in the account and obviously, maintain reliable service, which I think the city's doing a good job at. Just to show you the rate impact on the next slide, the bill would increase for 5,000 gallons of residential use by 83 cents a month, or 1%. For 5,000 gallons of commercial use, which has a slightly higher base charge, that bill would be a $1.4 increase, or 1%. For a commercial customer with a 1.5-inch meter using 42,000 gallons, so this would be one of your typical commercial customers that could, could be using small convenience store, grocery stores, things like that. The bill would go from $743 to $750, 1% increase, about $7.26 a month. And then to give you your reference to your surrounding communities and what they're charging for residential bill at 5,000 gallons, you can see that for combined water, wastewater service, again, compared to your, your tax comparisons are right in the middle of the comparison. And again, as you can imagine, many of these other communities are also looking at rate increases, some more significant than others. But very few utilities that I'm working with today are in a position to maintain only 1% rate increases a year. So in, in, my final recommendations to you are, consider the 1% rate adjustment for this fiscal year. Obviously, we're, we have not asked you to do the five-year rate increases because we haven't had any significant financings out there. So this is, you know, we relook at this on a year-to-year basis. So we're asking you to consider the 1% adjustment for fiscal '20 that based upon the forecast assumptions that the rates, based on the 1% increases, should be adequate to meet your capital improvement plan and fund your operating expenses. The proposed rates relative to the bond resolution rate covenants, our projected days of operating cash at the end of the period are 116 days above our minimum of 90. And our all-in debt service coverage target of 1.5, we're exceeding that at 1.82. So overall, there, these are modest increases relative to inflation, but adequate to move you forward through the next five years.
Any questions before we move on? Okay, we'll get on to proposed capital outlays. The total expenditure on this is $700,521. And these are what we'll be purchasing, or what we propose to purchase this year. Onto internal service funds. This is what Fleet and IT does for both of our internal services. Our proposed vehicle purchases totals $2.8 million. And you can just kind of scan through those, and if you have any questions as we go. You'll see 18 police vehicles. They're not getting any, Chief, or are they, Chief? And our IT proposed capital outlay of $212,000. These are the purchases that we intend to make. Our internal service funds are self-insured dental, as well as our loss fund. Really surprised about the dental premium increase. It's very modest compared to other things we've seen lately. Onto our health insurance funds. A 5% increase to premiums. And of course, for a, the dependent coverage is 50% shared with the employee. We have moved from Cigna to Aetna. We're in the process of open enrollment right now. So far, feedback has been very positive. The clinic, we have secured the clinic for another year with optional years in the future. That said, 17, we were talking about earlier, the, why we held back on some employees. That was, we had a very bad year, and we weren't sure where we were leading. But things seem to be stabilizing the trend itself for our self-insured healthcare. Now on to the unfunded. This totals $12.36 million, again, down from 14.8 that we had last year. And I'll just go through this quickly. And as you, as you can see, some of these major purchases, they are in the five-year plan. Like you see at the bottom, the fire truck replacement of the 2002 engine at $660,000. We now have that forecasted where we know that will land within the five-year budget plan. I wish I could provide music or something for you.
Ask questions as we go along. You're talking about Public Works General Construction to City Hall 381. What would that include? I'm on slide number 101.
Yep, I moved it back.
That was primarily space needs and feasibilities for a new building.
Okay, looking at...
Yeah, because larger buildings of that nature need years of prep work.
Okay. And the flooring improvements? See right above it, it says, well, it says flooring improvements, Public Works, General Construction, TPD interior improvements.
Yeah, those are just timing-based carpet and tile replacements on various buildings. Just general maintenance on the TPD building itself for interior. We've been a little bit that mid-year with the training room, but there are a lot more areas that need work.
Okay.
Just general age of the buildings.
And the Pritchard House improvements?
Pritchard House has aging issues with their, with the exterior and with their chimneys. So this was the design improvements, being this historic structure, we can't use it during traditional repairs. So this was to bring someone aboard to do historic structure review.
Okay.
You might have to increase that a little bit because it just got hit by lightning.
Yeah.
Be positive.
Might want to double that amount. Okay. And then we're looking at Fire Station 14, the design.
That's the south side fire station. Yep.
Sorry to ask all these questions, but you don't, for my vote on them, I sort of want to know what we're voting on. Public Safety Complex?
Ma'am, these are all deferred.
These are all deferred.
Yes.
I got to the unfunded priorities page. I'm sort of going down.
I'll get here. So this is the total of the past five slides is $12.36 million. Now, we did have a mid-year pickup of $637,000. As recall, we put $30,000 to demo blighted buildings.
Right.
We put $22,000 for a TPD computer replacement. Put in $155,000 in repaving. $115,000 to upgrade school zones. And another $315,000 to upgrade three traffic signal locations. So that was what your mid-year pickup was.
Okay.
So now, these are the unfunded priorities. Now again, $118,000 of state revenues came in above what we built this budget at. So as you see, the first two items, we're proposing an additional 0.5 pay raise to all employees across the board to make that 2.5% increase of pay to everybody. We need to do a security audit of City Hall. And we're also seeing security guards now posted in most of the municipal city halls within Brevard County. within Brevard County. So we think what will yield from that security audit is a security guard, which is approximately $60,000 a year. That may dip into your tax revenue right now. We can cover half of it with state. And I think Bridgette got some late-breaking news right as we were walking up here that we may be able to cover that completely with some refinancing. So those top three items, we believe we can do without touching any of your adverb taxes. Anything below those, these are our staff recommend, recommendations. We'd like to increase the security at the Moore Center. We have an aged generator there that went out during both of our previous hurricanes. Increased interest in trees. We do not have an arborist on staff. So that, that's our proposal on that. And then continue to fund the OPEB ARC as we can, the $476,000 shortfall.
Did I just say that?
Sure.
That $476,000, that's just the general fund portion? So if you choose to fund any additional OPEB ARC, the enterprise funds would have increases to them as well. But we just focused on the millage rate portion for the purpose of the budget workshop.
Now, again, these, these are our priorities. No decision needs to be made tonight on this, but we just wanted to roll this out to, to council and for further discussion in your subsequent hearings.
So you're saying, we're looking at additional 5% pay increase to...
.5.
.5, to solid waste stormwater and water resources, basically across the board.
Yes, ma'am. So what you see up here is to your general fund, which affects your taxes. Now, for your, your enterprise funds, that comes out of their operating, so that does not affect your taxes. So what we will do across the board, it's just not general employees, general funded employees, it's everybody across the board.
And that's on the next slide?
Yep.
Sorry, I keep going back and forth.
Yeah. There you go. And that's the cost within each one of those enterprise funds to get that extra .5%. Options to consider, again, is to adjust your millage rate, fund additional items as needed or a combination of both. No decisions, again, need to be made tonight, but we would take your feedback and listen to any citizens' input before the next budget hearing. And with that, we are to public comment.
If somebody would like to come up and speak, this is the time, so I don't see anybody getting up. Perhaps there is no one. We'll give them another second to decide. I see people talking. I guess not.
Okay, council discussion, sir.
Okay. I'll go.
Yeah.
Okay. And I do have a few questions. First one will be for Bridgette. I heard in one of the slides, it said we're paying about half of what's required for OPEB. Can you just clarify what that means for us, since we're not paying what's fully required? How are we, how's that impacting us as a city?
Well, our liability isn't going down as quickly as it should be.
So it's impacting when we're trying to lease?
Oh, you mean financially? Well, I can tell you this. I mean, I was thinking about, I just think about the liability, but we have had issues with our rates when we went into finance vehicles. We've gotten a lot more pushback from some of our lenders. We've gotten reasonable rates, but I think that's just because of the rate, interest rate environment right now. But we did have a lot more justifying and have to go through a lot more of a rigorous kind of vetting process than we have in the past. And we early implemented the new gas fees for OPEB, so this year, everybody else will be implementing them. And so it'll be interesting to see what happens as we go into financing this next year. But that's the only place we've really seen it. We did get comments from GFOA because we do have an abnormally large one.
Okay. And then can you clarify what our current millage rate is right now? Not what the budget was built at, but currently, this past year, what our but, millage rate was?
That one leaves my head very quickly.
Yeah.
Seven point nine five one seven.
One seven, okay.
Nine five one seven.
Okay. And then the, the proposed budget that we just saw, including now three unfunded items because of additional revenue, is the 7.7210.
Yes. But those three, those three new items are not in the proposed budget right now.
But we're not looking at, we won't need to raise the millage rate higher than that to fund those because of that additional?
Yes. And what happened this afternoon was, we got some news. Because we underspent some of our capital costs in 2018, we were able to lower our debt payment on our 2018 vehicles. So that's the reason why, just today, we found out that we had an extra, like, $30,000 that we didn't plan.
Okay. This is probably my favorite budget meeting I've been to. Gosh, man.
Well, I'll tell you, just, just again, to compliment staff, put, they put a lot of work into the five-year plan. And I think that's why this one really came out smoothly, because we weren't debating over a fire truck versus 18 police cars and things like that. We now have a, a path ahead where we can see where those are going to hit.
Yeah. And then my personal opinion, which is why I love doing the COLAs, I always feel if you're paying your employees and showing that you value them, I feel like they in turn want to work harder, and I feel like we have great staff, so. Okay, police chief, maybe this one for you. For police vehicles, have we done any research on hybrid vehicles, like looking at long-term cost savings or options?
Yeah, actually, courtesy of Altamont Springs.
Okay.
They've tried that, and it was a huge failure.
Okay.
And space, safety, repairs. So we, yes, we, we have, but it was wonderful because it didn't cost the city of Titusville a dime.
Yes. That's what I like. Learn from best practices. Okay. And then I like this idea of the security guard or security officer at our council meetings. I feel like that would probably be in the...
No, ma'am, that, that'll be just in the, in the lobby area where we handle money.
Okay.
And during the day, we'll still have a sworn officer during your council meetings.
Okay, so that will stay the same. Okay. And then this is probably going to be one for maybe Sean. With, when I was looking at the water rate increases, I noticed that I feel like our water rate's actually very competitive with the other ones, fine. The sewer seems to be much higher. Is there a reason for that, or are there things that we can be doing or funding in the future to get that cost down? I just noticed it seemed, in comparison to the other ones, theirs are either equal to or theirs are, theirs is lower. Our water rate's lower than theirs, but our sewer's much higher than theirs. So I didn't...
So a big, a big factor in, in the, in your comparison on wastewater rates, and you, you picked up on exactly what's going on. You've got very competitive water rates. Your wastewater rates are a little high. But the story we've been telling you about that continues to be the case, and that is with respect to the capacity that's available on the sewer side versus how utilized it is. So even with the 140 customer growth, we have plenty of capacity to deal with future growth. And because we're only utilizing about, basically, we've got investment, we're only utilizing 50% of that investment. So when the last sewer plant expansion was done, it, it, you know, with hindsight, you could say we didn't need to expand the plant as much as we did.
Okay.
Okay? But as we move forward and grow more, we don't have to add capacity to serve those customers. So all the growth that we can garner in future years will help to bring those rates more in line.
Okay.
As we better utilize the asset.
Okay. And then...
If I may, basically, it, it's because we, we don't have to build any more capacity. So everything that comes in basically goes to, to the bottom line until we fill the capacity. We were forced because it wasn't done for so many years when it should have been done by EPA, I guess, right?
DEP, yes.
Okay.
To, to build that, and they built it with extra capacity, but we didn't have the growth.
Don't utilize it. Okay, so it will even as we continue to grow.
Over time, I think your rates will look more competitive with surrounding community. And I can't say, I haven't surveyed their capacity utilization. But knowing how long that plant's been online, for it to still only be a little bit above 50% utilized tells me there, that's where the problem lies. But again, with future growth, that'll, you're going to be able, as Mayor said, you're going to be able to serve that growth, and there'll only be incremental increases in treatment costs. You won't have to add capacity to serve it.
Okay. And then I think I remember, could, I could be wrong, but last year, I think our water rate increased 3%? Because I want to say it was like high, and then we kind of progressed low to this 1 to 0. So it was a little, I can understand, but I was a little disappointed to see that 0% go away now, just to continually have that 1% rate increase.
Well, again, you know, changes in the operating costs were, were, were primary there. The capital plan looks a little different than what we looked at last time. But, but, and also, we elected to just levelize it out. If we had done the 2% this year, we, we probably could have zeroed out one of those 1%. But our, really, our strategy is to try to move the rates up very reasonably over time so that it meets with consumers' budgets.
Right.
And doesn't, we don't have a, a gear where we have a big increase.
Right.
And the other thing we did target, because again, over the five-year period, to make that work, we are, and that was the case last year as well, we are using some of your fund balance. But it's anticipation of the debt service going away in 2024.
Okay.
So that we don't overshoot in that year.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, just a comment from me, because I've, I've been here during certain periods of times where we would, would go with 0 for some number of years and then hit it with 5 to 7%.
Okay.
And the public doesn't like that incrementally.
I would agree.
Incrementally doing it, they can handle it a lot better for their own finances.
I mean, 83 cents a year increase in your water and sewer bill is, is, is a good thing.
Very few people will complain.
Yeah.
But there will be some.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay. Next, please.
Oh, I got to go?
Go.
So our millage rate last year was 7.9517, correct? And this year, the budget was built on 7.7210. Bridgette, what happens if we leave the millage rate at 7.9517?
We generate more revenue?
Do we know how much more?
Um, would have to calculate that. I might have it calculated somewhere here.
$300,000.
I have a little cheat sheet.
I wrote mine. About $300,000? So instead of having 462,000, we'd have 762,000.
And you always have the option, that was part of the discussions that you, you know, you need to consider between now and the first hearing is, if you want to raise the millage rate, if you can give us an idea of the things you might want to fund, then we can come prepared with some options for you like we have in the past at the public hearing.
Well, yeah, I did come up with my ideas of what I wanted to do. I mean, obviously, some of the unfunded priorities were tops. I think the first page is, is wonderful. I would love to see the flooring improvements done, the TPD interior improvements done, and the Maria Park Trail Connection done. Did I miss one? I mean, those, to me, as we grow and we become a little more, I don't want our buildings looking shabby. I want our city to look prosperous and well-kept. So...
Go ahead.
That's, that's, that's my thought, is that we're talking about flooring, we're talking about people walking into the police department and saying, hey, it looks nice. If there's something we can do with City Hall, short of building a new building. Short of building a new building.
Well, we, we are renovating the bathrooms at mid-year, so all, all the restrooms will be done. And you've seen that what we've tried to do with paint and other things. So we're, we are trying to make it at least a suitable, acceptable for 1960 building.
And you'll, you'll give us the numbers then as to what it will cost an increased millage?
Certainly. So what we can do is, just like you've got the unfunded priority sheet where it has the source and the funding needs and proposed millage, we can add any of these items you think you would like to consider at the hearing to a list like that so that at least you can...
You'll break them down for us so we can make choices.
Okay. That would be cool.
Anything?
Thank you.
Anything else?
I want to be quiet. Bye.
Anyone else have anything?
Over here.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you very much. Like, I like the budget, but I think I'm with Joe Lynn. You know, I, I'm a firm believer that if, if you've got something at a certain rate, when you start going down, then you keep going down and down. So certainly like to see it at the, the same rate we have now. I have always had, I, I did a visit a while back of our public works area, and that needs to be improved. I mean, it's in pretty bad shape, and we, we need to fix that. So I would like to see some more money. I know you're doing the, the review, I guess, right now of it. To me, it's not much of a review. You, you just need to tear it down and start over again. It's pretty bad over there. No, it's really, really bad over there. So, you know, so if we could save some money by not doing all this review, when I can see it with my naked eyes, then I think you would just go ahead and do it and not waste the money on it. That's my opinion. I'm not trying to disparage anyone. I know there are certain things you have to do, but those buildings are in terrible shape over there, and we need to do better by our employees. I like the fact that we're giving the 2.5% raise. I'd like to see that 3% to tell you the truth. You know, the economy is better, and with my business and with a lot of other business, it's very hard to find people qualified. And those who you're looking for, they already have good jobs. And so we need to, it, it takes a whole lot to train and get people at the standard you need to make sure that they're proficient at their job. So we need to make sure we can keep the people that we have. Maybe it's time for us to just push it a little bit more. I like for us, I, I don't know how much it costs for every percent. I, how much?
For .5, it's $79,000. So to add another .5, be another $79,000.
$79,000. See...
That's just general fund, but...
Yeah. But I like to, I like for us to look at that and see if we can do a little bit more for our, our city. They have been down so long, in my opinion, and a lot, a lot of people have left. We, we need to maintain what we have. We, we need to make sure they understand that we want them to stay for sure. A lot of times, they're doing more than, you know, what they need to do, but they love the city and they want to continue with the city. I'm with Joe and Lynn. They'll love us to have another City Hall for sure. Every place that we go, you know, you go to Cape Canaveral, I can't believe, they got a brand-new City Hall, and, you know, Melbourne, everybody has a, a new City Hall, and we've got a 1960 building here, and we're trying to make do. Titusville, if you don't remember, is the county seat. But we're not treated like we're the county seat. So I, I just think we need to, this is the time. When I was on the school board, people would come rushing to me and say, you're spending money, you're spending money. Well, when you have money, that's when you need to spend it, because when you don't have it, you know, you can't, you don't have anything, and things just go in disarray. So I like for us to keep the millage where it is and come up with some options that will enhance the city, make it look better. City Hall certainly needs some help for sure. I don't, I wish we had money. I wish we, you know, could have a bond program or something, just to put it on the record where we could do something about this, this, this facility. I know there's some future for the police station, and hopefully, that's going to happen sooner than later for sure, because I think we need a, a better police department, police facility also. But to me, the number-one priority should be right now, when it comes down to facilities, is Kevin.
Yeah.
That's...
He's number one?
We just need to do it faster, because it's been years, and it's pretty bad for sure. And I know the people are, you know, are pretty patient over there, but to me, I think we need to do better over there. Now, I do have a question about the unfunded needs. Why do we put the recurring needs with those one time? Like, for instance, we buy 18 cars for the police department, but we also talk about we need more police officers. And when you have police officers, of course, that's a recurring. We have a car... And when you have police officers, of course, that's a recurring, we have a cost that we have, right? So why do we put those together? Shouldn't we separate those from?
Because I think the perspective when we created this list was just to give you all a laundry list of everything that we need. And the idea is that we would fund any of the recurring costs, such as new people, through something like a millage rate rather than a one-time source of revenue. That's why you see us deferring a lot of capital during the adopted budget process. And then we'll fund it at mid-year if we have any one-time extra revenues. So it was just kind of to provide an overall perspective of everything we need at some point in time.
Okay. I, I need clarification. You're sitting over there. I definitely need to ask you a question for sure. You came to us and, and we voted on something and I can't remember, but we did move from one health insurance company to that. Cigna to Aetna. Can you explain what difference that makes to the employees?
It will just be a different third-party administrator that will be paying the claims and customer service. Several of the proposed services were enhancements from what you have. I think Cigna did a fine job. But they proposed a concierge service so that members that had issues that they need to get resolved, they have a dedicated unit that goes beyond, you know, above and beyond. Now, we haven't seen it in action here yet, but certainly it's something that Cigna had that they were going to charge extra to be able to receive. And Aetna was able to put that in. The network was very similar, so there should be very little feeling of difference between the providers that are available to be in the network. There will be some formulary differences on the prescription drug program. But when we looked at it, that looked very minimal in terms of disruption. There may be more drugs that are on the tier-two copayment versus the non-preferred, the tier-three and vice versa. But it was a very close match on that as well. So, you know, I think from the perspective of the employees are going to see a new ID card, they're going to have a different feel. Aetna has deployed a lot of resources to make the success, a successful implementation. There will be some people that might be having ongoing care that will transition between the two companies after October 1st. So there is a process in place to help facilitate. And if it's a course of treatment, that might result in a provider who's not in the network. There'll be a sufficient amount of time to complete a course of treatment, et cetera. People who are on high-cost drugs, the, you know, specialty types of medications, those things for rheumatoid arthritis and multiple sclerosis. Again, there's a transition period to assist those members who need to maybe have that transition. Again, I think it'll be minimal from the employee's perspective. I think the thing they might see is a, you know, a, that second option, which is really the city's plan option, which is the value plan. So there'll be two plans this year. And the, the objective of that second plan was to be able to provide a, a plan with more affordable premiums for the family coverages. So there was a pretty substantial reduction in the child tier and the spouse tier and the family tier. So hopefully the employees will see that as a very positive, as a very positive option that's being rolled out this year. But it should be, I, I think, very minimal disruption to the employees.
All right. I appreciate you explaining that because I, I didn't explain it well when someone asked me about it. So I appreciate you doing that. Now, of course, the, the elephant in the room, OPEB. I, I need some clarification when it comes down to, we, we are down as far as what we should have in the, in the system, right? Do you feel comfortable with where we are or, give, give me some more words?
Okay, well, here's the thing. Our OPEB arc went down slightly over the previous year and that mostly had to do with the market. The investment assumptions helped a lot, but we still have probably the highest OPEB liability around. Which is why, I, I don't know if you remember during the CAFR, there was a note, a comment in the CAFR in the Auditor General section because our liability's so high. So as finance director, I would like to see that liability be as low as it can be and reasonably be. I think by continuing repetitive contributions to the arc will help us, even if it's not at 100%. But as our pension liabilities are kind of coming down, I see an opportunity to increase what we put into OPEB. And that's what I would like to do because I think that that's going to help the overall health of the city. Because as we go into these recessionary times which will come, that arc's going to get a lot higher because of the investment income. So to me, it's never enough until it's fully funded, but that's just because that's my job to make sure that we are as funded as possible.
No, I appreciate what, what you're saying. So the, we're doing what, 370, did I say 376 or was it four something?
1.8 million.
1.8.
Of the required three.
Across all funds.
So what would make you feel comfortable yearly being put in this?
100%.
I'd like 100% if you want to go up to the full military.
Well, that's not going to happen, but you know, reasonably, what, what do you think we can do to get to the right number? Why you keep looking at him?
So.
Because I think that's a political question that I really don't want to answer.
I'm not trying to be political. I just need to know, you know?
So what, what our advisors suggested is if we maintain a consistent contribution rate, and that's what our strategy is right now. Year after year, it should, given that a major recession doesn't happen, it should help us weather the storm. So we're, we're consistently putting 1.8 of the last year, 3.2 million. We did 1.8 this year of the 3.0 million. So we're trying to fulfill that strategy of being consistent and, and contributing. We've only contributed, what, two years now?
What, what I think would be good is if we could build into the budget small incremental increases. Like, our goal was 50% and we did 50% last year. We kept it at 50% this year because we wanted to give some reasonable pay raises to employees. So it would be nice to, to see small incremental adjustments every year, even if it's an additional 15 or 20% or, you know, 10%. Whatever we council would choose to do, but I think that that is sending us in a better direction than contin, continuing to contribute just 50%.
Right.
But we don't always, when we put the budget together, we have to balance all of these things. And so at a minimum, we say, we, we don't want to lose ground. So.
Go ahead.
On a positive note, as being on the OPEB board, we are approaching $3 million in that trust fund at the end of this fiscal year, at the next fiscal year. We remain one of the only cities in the state that is actually have an active trust fund. And we've been pretty consistent over the last couple of years of contributing, even though it's only a small percentage of the arc. We are contributing and we are starting to build up a trust fund. And if the returns continue to be as good as they have in the past, I think we'll be in a better position. So we are, there are positive sides to the OPEB trust fund.
Absolutely. Anything else, sir?
One other question. So with that, would you like to see more of what we are putting in today in this budget?
So if we had to choose between a Public Works facility and OPEB, I would go with Public Works because I feel like that that's more of an immediate thing. This OPEB thing's going to take a while. Even if you decided to compromise and give a little bit more, like 10% more, that's a step in the right direction.
Right, that's what I was asking.
But, but it's kind of hard when we're funding this at 50% in two years in a row. We know our liability is, will hopefully begin to go down. And then we have these other capital needs that we're not funding. It's kind of a challenge to weigh those.
Right. I, I like for you to put that down, that we'll do a little.
Yeah.
Incremental, yeah. To get us out of this hole. I'm done now, sir.
Thank you. Can I, can I, can I comment? Because it has to do with, with what he's been talking about. The OPEB is, is an elephant. And an elephant is best eaten one bite at a time. And that expression is very applicable here. It, it's been a major problem for us, some things happened years ago to put us in that position. And staff has been, been trying to lessen that burden and I think they're doing a great job. It's, the problem is we can only do so much each year. So we'd like to get rid of it certainly altogether, but that's going to be difficult. As far as public works, I, I completely concur with, with you. That's been going on for as long as I can remember, actually, even before I got on council, I was on staff. There was several times when it was slated to be another building done elsewhere. And as things kept going up and down and that kept getting dropped back. So I also would like to see that as a, a priority. I don't know how, when, or how much. But we, we really do need to get that in, in some shape that people can be proud of where they work, frankly. It's hard to do it down there now. Okay, yes, sir.
No, 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 that's fine. That's perfect. When you go last, you just do a lot of agreeing. Because it's, it, there's a lot to agree with, but I do have a couple. I talk about it every year and I noticed, Police Chief, we were at 22 shortage on the officers. We're down to 18. I have discussed this, some with City Manager, but I'd like to hear from you that you're feeling okay about the plan we have to, what's the word I'm looking for, alleviate, get rid of this deficit of police officers. And, and again, I was on a ride along last weekend, I think maybe two weekends ago. And, you know, it's just, they're, they're trying to cover so much sometimes. And I don't want to get this out there, like they're trying to cover so much or so little. That could be a bad strategy to say that. But sometimes it's like they're really stretched thin. And that's not to count. Maybe you get some kind of flu epidemic, then what goes on? I mean, so I, this has been something that's been a big deal for me from the beginning, as you know. So I'd kind of like to hear your thoughts on where we're at with that.
Our City Manager and our staff have a, what I think is a very sound plan on getting us, chipping us away.
Good.
At the deficit. The interesting thing is we can only train so many at one time. So the increments we're doing is really perfect considering attrition. So when you add the attrition with what we're adding, it's really where we're at. And we're also looking, the COPS grant, which is a, the national funded community policing grant, is, has been suspended. The state of California is in a lawsuit with the federal government over that and we're hoping that frees up. And if it does, there's an opportunity for four to five, that would be, and then we would have to incrementally fund it. And then we would look at that strategy. But we are very comfortable with the plan and it is something that our City Manager has met with our staff and with finance and, and it's, it's doable.
Awesome. I think that's a, I, I think we've come, I don't say a long way because we've been working on this. And City Manager, as you said, and staff have done a great job and I know you guys have collaborated. But it was just a couple of years ago, I think we were in a little bit more of an anxiety situation. And I think now there's a comfortable situation and we're moving forward.
Yeah, the, the growth of the city is what it started. I think it's anxiety in, in every department in Titusville. And when you talk to Ms. Bisacca's area, it's here. It's, 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 it's happening. It's growing. And so every department has to embrace for this. And I think, quite frankly, I think we're very forward-thinking as a city and a staff. And, and I think the plan is, is really sound.
Okay, good. Thank you. And speaking of growing, Fire Chief, I know that we want to expand towards a southern fire station. And I think we talked about that back in 16 when I first came aboard here. What do you see as a realistic time need? And I know this is a, you know, unfunded priority, so I, I know that they're, that everybody in the staff is very aware and working hard for this. But, you know, from my own information, what, how do you feel about, what's the timeframe you think this is a must? We've got to get down there.
Fifth fire station's going to be justified primarily by the, the number of rooftops that we have coming into the city in the south end. Right now at that, at, at this point, we do have, and we've entered into, and we're on our fourth year, third year of an, of an auto aid agreement with Pervara County Fire, where closest unit goes. That's helping to alleviate some of the, I guess you would say deficiencies that we may have had in certain areas of the city. But it's ultimately going to come down to, to development and, and completed rooftops and increased population and so forth. It's going to, it's going to bring forth that demand in a more realistic manner and it's still probably a few years down the road.
Okay, so we're really on a good track here to be, you know, looking at the, at the study.
Yes, sir. And, and looking at, within our five-year plan, we do have some, we, we do have it in our plan, budgets, you know, permitting, working with the City Manager and, and so forth, to continue to increase our staffing incremental, incrementally to account for that. So that way, when the time comes for us to pull that trigger on that fifth fire station, we're not scrambling to try and hire 15 additional firefighters to try and staff a station. We'll be better equipped to do that at that point.
Okay, very good. I was, I was kind of curious where you were with that. So that's, that's good. Thank you. This is where I think I'd do some more agreeing. Security officer is definitely a need. We've had some discussions and understandings of some things that have gone on down there during the day that there's got to be some kind of deterrent there. So I, I think that's outstanding. Again, I go back to 2016 when I got to take the tour of the Public Works building. And I think I was told then it was on the list. I think you're still on the list. So I, I think that's unanimous that we, I don't know exactly what we'll end up doing or can do, but gosh almighty, that's, that's got to get better. That's got to, well, I'll leave that alone. The raise, yes, I agree. You, you have to compete. You know, I was the facility AP at Titusville High School for years. We would, back when the economy was bad, we'd have a custodial position out there and 50 people would apply for it. When the economy got good, I couldn't get two or three people to apply for it. Because SpaceX and the people out there where I'm paying $12 an hour, they're paying $23 an hour. So I'm not saying we can pay $23 an hour. We, we couldn't at Titusville, well, Pervara Public Schools and I still don't. But we had to be as competitive as we could be and that's really all we can do. And, and obviously with the appreciation we have for the, the work they do in all the levels. So yes, I, I totally agree with that. You got to compete. I like to say this, I think I've said it just about every time, what a great success story that Marina is, City Manager and staff. Again, I think when I first came in here in 16, there was, you know, the turning around of that ship, so to speak, pun intended. But to think that there is a waiting list now is not something I thought when we first started talking would, would be happening this quickly. That's pretty amazing. And then again, the, the water success story, as I call it. Sean, you guys do a great job over there and, you know, it's amazing. There's always, there's an incremental subject of complaint, you know, and there for a while, it certainly got to be water. And I shouldn't even bring that back up. I have to knock on something. But I, it's just amazing how, how great you guys do. And then when I hear that, you know, we're 50% of capacity, that's very refreshing. And then you're out ahead of the curve. You know, we've talked about being ahead of the curve. You're at least equal with the curve, if not ahead of the curve, working on the cyber situations and the concern that we take, you all take, we take very seriously. So I appreciate that. I, you know, I kind of had not thought of the possibility. I, I think we sit over here and always want to get the millage rate as low as we can. We've done that since we've been. But I'm not so, so opposed to what you're saying there. We, we don't raise it and we have the ability to do some things if we leave it the same. So I, I, I think I can ponder that in a positive way. And then on, I, I think I had a question like this last time and, and I probably should remember what it was. But slide 50, there's something on the, the, what is it, solid waste? I can't even move this thing. Miss technology. There you go. Can you help me? There you go. Here we go. Here we go. Slide 50. You know, the hard part is I can't, that's another thing I was going to say. City Manager, can you help me next year make all the writing bigger on everything? I couldn't read any of that, so I start to look at my computer. I can't read that. So there we go. Thank you. She's, she got me. Okay, no wonder I can't find, that's 51. Thank you for being here, Sarah. Line three, $900,000 variances. That's, what, what is that exactly? Who can help me with that? Line three, prior year revenues, 382,000 and then proposed 1.282 million. That's, I don't understand that. That looks good. Just in case you didn't think I was paying attention.
That's our prior year revenues. So whenever the solid, we calculate each year based on the CAFR. They had a big pickup at CAFR time and so that increased the unspent prior year revenues from, in, in the solid waste department. So we estimate based on cash in the bank and what we project our expenses to be. And that's, that's kind of the net of those numbers. We were projecting less when we were going into FY19 than what actually happened. So, and I don't know exactly why your revenues were so much higher and.
I think we got paid back for some of the hurricanes. We bill out for our degree. I know we got some progress payments on. I know at least Matthew was paid off.
I know at least Matthew has paid off. I think Irma may have gotten the first payment.
There had to be, I looked, I said, I'm not going to interrupt him here. I said, but there's got to be something to this one. So that was probably what it was.
Yeah, we put out, luckily, with our hurricane, we, all our labors, we get it back. We get 90% of it back, usually. So we charge FEMA for it, for our cleanup effort, so.
Yeah, we're just starting to see payment for Irma coming in right now. So I think the majority of yours would have been Matthew and pre-Irma.
So when we, when we finished the 2018 fiscal year, and we, at mid-year this past May, we trued up to CAFR. And that's when all that prior year revenue came into this fund. Because we had it left over at the end of the year, and we didn't plan on it in the budget at that time.
Okay, that explains it. It was just kind of a curiosity to me, that's, there's got to be an answer there. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir. I've discussed this with, this one with staff before. And it just, you just brought it up again, the security guard. I think that's an absolute must in this world today, which things are, just seem to be getting worse and worse. And having somebody in-house, ready for anything, gives everybody that's here, public and city employees, a better place to work. So that's, and that's not a big issue. So that should be an absolute, in my opinion.
Can I add one more?
Sure, you can.
I can add one more. Peggy.
Thank you for the arborist on the list. Thank you. Thank you, Scott. I was going to give you the credit. Apparently, the city of Tampa, I understand, has 18 of them.
Wait, she's done.
Yeah, yeah. So it would be, yeah. So that would be neat to have one here. Thank you.
Members, though.
Yes. Is it possible at our next meeting to get a comparison chart of what our millage rate is compared to surrounding areas? Because I, while I'm open to the millage rate staying the same, you guys have no idea how happy I was when I saw this budget. And City Manager, this, you did a tremendous job. Like, even finding things that, you know, the media specialists now, like, things that when I first started, like, was just a dream because we were in such tight times. And I think being patient and progressively implementing these things, thanks to your leadership and our great staff, this is, like, I've been waiting to be in this situation. So it makes me very happy to see that we could potentially lower our millage rate and get competitive with other surrounding areas. Even though we're lowering it, doesn't necessarily mean that, you know, people's taxes are going to go down as our property values rise, which I think is fantastic. But I would like to lower it, if possible, and keep implementing and doing what we're doing. Because I think we'll still, as we've made decisions, I think we're headed in a great direction. And it's just, it makes me so excited to be on council right now and to see these things. So I am open to keeping it the same. But I would like to lower it if we can. And I feel very confident in what has been proposed. And now we're able to fund some of those things that I would have, I would have wanted to kind of see it rise for those things anyways, especially the COLA. But just to see where we are with other surrounding areas, I think, would be beneficial.
So Sarah, we do that. That's a standard slide that we prepare.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, and then we also do the tax house to kind of give you an idea of what the impact would look like. And we can do that based on the proposed tentative and the current millage rate, if you would like it in those three.
Okay.
Just to put in perspective, millage rate, because everybody says, well, our millage rate is higher. It's because our property values are lower. It's an inverse proportion.